But the bottom line, governmental activities principally general fund was positive of 2,817,96. Business type activities is positive by about 5.5 million. City as a whole is close about 8.3 million as far as that presentation on the balance sheet. In the next page on page five, statement of activities, that's an income statement, and it goes from the theory that the city, like any other governmental entity, is in business of providing services. So the first thing that it starts with are expenses. Governmental activities spent almost 1.3 million dollars during the year. And over to the right, it shows some of the ways that was paid for, charges for services, grants, so forth. But had the governmental activities operated strictly on the basis of trying to charge for the services that we've lost, almost 800,000 dollars. So down at the bottom, you see the general revenues of about 1,358,331, and the changes in that position is a positive in this presentation of $567,894. So that increase in that position from 2.2 million to 2.8 million. Business type activities, water sewer and sanitation, start with the expenses on that. Those are intended to be self-sufficient, and you can see that basically that the water holds us on very well. Sewer, of course, showed another loss. Sanitation is about break even. Then at the bottom, you know, the only other funding for that is a little bit of interest income in the transfers. That adjustment for accumulated depreciation, when we went back to the 18 report and looked at the depreciation schedule that was provided for us, there was a new asset that was put on during that year that really not nearly enough depreciation was claimed on for that year. So this is the amount that we put in to bring us back to where we should be on that. And then again, you have the $5.5 million net position at the end of the year. Page six is the balance sheet governmental funds, and this is the basis that you're accustomed to budgeting on. And the fund balance under this one, our general fund, a million seven, non-major slight deficit, 1.7 million overall. So then you show at the bottom how you get from one to the other. You start from 1.7, then you add in the capital assets, then you go through, essentially, other than these no payable, everything else that's adjusted has to do with the pensions. And at the end of that, in that position, it's still 2,817,96, so it's still more than the one with the governmental presentation. And essentially, the biggest thing about that is that Hartford has virtually no debt at all in its general fund. Page seven is the income statement under this presentation. You had the general fund increased by 283, up to 783,000. If you look at the foreign transfers, it was actually almost 480,000. Bottom line, general fund plus 1.7 million, and the non-major, and there's a part down on those in the back, shows you how you get to that $9,000 short. And page eight shows the income statement with the 238,572, and then you end up with the 567,894. And that has to do with, of course, when you spend money for capital outlay, police cars, or in this case sidewalk improvements, then that shows up as an expense under this presentation, but it's an asset in the business life basis. On page nine, that breaks everything down, showing a water sewer and sanitation. Net position is still positive on water, 275. Sewer, 5.1 million, and sanitation, 7870. That's probably the main thing to show there. On the, I stated in that position, it's one thing you might want to look at again there, that internal balances. Governmental activities shows $912,000 due from other funds, and the business type activities, of course, shows an amount due of almost $912,000. Years of the general fund basically getting money to these other funds, and in effect, that is a key losses for all those years. So when you have these kinds of inter-fund receivables and payables, the intention is that they clear themselves out over some fairly short period of time. These have been going on for quite a while, so it's something that you might want to look at, whether there's a way at some point to just make a simple transfer out of that, take it out of the general fund, and put it back into the, clear that out. Any questions about any of that?
Okay, so Dan, we actually, during this period, we did clean out all of the debt related to the occupational tax. Our goal was to not, that we couldn't do it all at once.
Right.
So we just did occupational tax under this audit period. And then next year, we hope to do, and just year by year, to try to clean that balance up a little bit.
Yeah. Because you need to just get back to that principle, you know, where especially the water sewer and sanitation are self-sufficient. Page 11 is cash flow, and that's just basically money in, money out. Sometimes that's more meaningful than anything else, but you can see even across the board, all three of those funds, even with operating losses, three of those ended up, basically, that the cash increased all the way through, not a great deal, but increased over almost $61,230. Page 12 is kind of meaningless. That's a payroll fund. Lots and lots of pages of notes beginning on page 13. Most of those are just accounting principles, how you operate. Page 12 shows these inter-fund receivables and payables, as well as the transfers at the bottom. Page 23, changes in fixed assets. The governmental activities principally the general fund, but also could be road improvements. Addition to construction in process for almost $438,000 in that sidewalk project. And then you just have some other things here and there that you've done, some streets, street repairs, improvements, equipment purchased, and then depreciation comes off against that. You've got, on the business type activity, another $528,000 added to construction process. But then if you see over to the right on the deletions, basically, when that was put in service, it accumulated up to the 1,800,000. Then that was all transferred over as being in service. So that was pretty much a wash. The bottom shows depreciation broken down by function. Page 24 is your debt structure. You can see we come out on governmental activities, only owed $371,000 at the beginning of the year, and end of the year, only on 332,201. The debt in the proprietary, you know, is all related to these major projects. You've got sewer fund and water fund bonds payable. So the city there owed about 2,755 at the end of the year. But, you know, again, you made the payments all where they were due, 53,500 scheduled, pay 56,000 on this year that you're in now. Page 25 shows how the general fund debt would be paid off. Let's see, equipment. Then we get lots, lots as usual notes sort on page 26, with all this pension business. That doesn't finish up to the top of page 36. Let's see, where's the net position? Page 015 explained the restatement for that appreciation. Then on page, page 38, on the subsequent events, we've considered that on these cities, we just have to put that note in about the virus, because, you know, obviously, it's impacting you, it's impacting everybody, and it's just nothing that somebody casually reads this. It needs to be brought to their Page 39, general fund budget. See that the revenues, overall taxes and licenses were good. The only thing that was downward was the grants and government revenues, but then expenditures were better than expected. So overall, on excess revenues expenditures, it was about $12,000 short of the budget amount. Then if you go through all the other things, the changes in fund balance overall was $35,000 better than budgeted. Few more pages then of all the note, the note business and the old tip for the health Supplementary information on 46, the three special revenue firms are cemetery, LGEA, and road fund. And page 47 is the revenues and expenditures out of those. The big thing on cemetery is there just, there were just a lot of, a lot of things were done out of cemetery fund last year, and it did end up, it did end up with a deficit balance, even though there was cash in it. LGEA was pretty much break even, and so was road fund. 48 just breaks down general fund expenditures. 49, 50 is the independent auditors report on compliance and on internal controls. And 51 and 52 are the ones that are in here because Hartford was a single audit again because of the amount of federal money that you went through last year. In fact, we have to have a peer review every three years, and if we do a single audit, then that has to be included in it. And our 630, 18 was the last time we were peer reviewed. They were done, they did that in October of last year. We had two single audits last year. We had Hartford and another city, and they selected Hartford. So you've been scrutinized heavily by CPA firm in Lexington right now, as well as the Illinois Society of CPAs who administers that. Pages 52, 53, 54 is all that, and there were no findings, no exceptions at all taken to the way you handle federal money. Only finding was on page 55, and that one had to do with sidewalk project, is that there was some work that was completed at year end, that even though it wasn't built until after the fiscal year, because of work had been done, the city was entitled to reimbursement on it. We do a percentage check on whether we consider it being material or not, and that one was over the materiality amount. So we did make a $39,000 adjustment for that, to book that revenue, which actually, bottom line, the city came out looking better as a result of that. That was the only one, that was the only finding, and the only adjustment that we made to it. So do you have any questions on any of it?
Anybody have any questions about any of it? I think they've all got, like me, have glazed looks in their eyes.
Yeah, a little shell shock there.
Yeah, I think so. A lot of information at one time. Well, let's take it home and digest it line by line, I guess.
Anybody feel free to call me anytime they want to on that. After they go home, we've had a chance to review it.
Well, all of our accounting majors here are, we're pretty limited on accounting majors here, so we got one. Well, we appreciate your work, though, and...
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Lisa?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Bye. We need a motion to accept that. We need a motion to accept that audit.
Yeah. All right. I know it's a lot of information. Overall, it looks like we're in pretty good shape, you know, and I have to give credit to all the employees and all of our staff, that they're, they're very diligent and conservative, and it's paying off. So I will accept a motion at this time to accept this audit report and for approval. All right. Mary Bill makes the motion. Second. Jerry, any discussion regarding it? Good luck on trying to disseminate all this information, digest it.
I think they'll remember us by the next month.
I think they'll get a chance to review this. Where do we stand? Are we up or down?
Well...
On our own.
Our head's above water. Let's just put it like that. I don't remember, I don't remember if we're neck level, or chest level, or what we are, but we're, we are above water. So that's the main thing right now with some little towns fighting trouble during all this coronavirus and...
Well, I think I remember last year, there was some concern over the new insurance requirements and things like that.
Yeah.
We've looked up that they've left our, our contribution for retirement for our employees, they left at the same level. They've not raised it this year, so it's still 26 percent. But that's, that's better than jumping all the way up to where they hoped to get, so you know.
I started to say, weren't they going up to 40 something?
I'm not sure on this. They keep making changes with the legislature, you know, they've separated this last time, separated SERs out of the KRS, and that had a positive effect for us, I think, you know. I think we're seeing some good results out of that. We've got a motion in seconds. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor, signify with an uplifted hand. Thank you. Motion's carried. All right, no opposition. We don't have any investors tonight. We'll take a look at the minutes of our previous meeting. If you have any comments, questions, additions, deletions. The April 23, 2020 meeting, it was a very short one. All we had to do was consider that one item.
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
All right, motion's made. Is there a second? David? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, Ms. Tara, it's your time. You've got something for us? Okay, thank you. Much appreciated. I'm sorry. I'm just in that mood right now. All right, let's take a look at our bank statements and see if you have any questions about our expenditures, balances, or anything else regarding our Hopefully, y'all can pick up your packets early enough that you can go through these and look for any kind of strange, I don't know, anything odd that we've purchased this time out of the ordinary.
The only other issue was the repairs are in there.
The what now?
Repairs that were approved showed up in there. The repairs.
Repairs?
Gator repair and some of that stuff this month. That's all.
I'm having trouble, Harry.
I'm having trouble.
The repairs that were made, is even if it was different?
The mechanical repairs to the gator, the rebuild engine, things like that?
We've, we had one mower, our last mower that needed some work blew its engine, and that had to be replaced finally. But it's, it's one of our older mowers. It's probably the oldest one.
Eight or nine years old.
Huh?
Eight or nine years old.
Yeah. Eight or nine years old, as much as they get used by so many different jockeys that, you know, we're lucky that we got this far, I guess. But that, that engine took a brand-new engine, replaced his $2,100. And that's X mark out here in Southern State. So everything's done locally there.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the financials.
Financials? All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Who's second?
Either one.
Mary Bill.
It's one or two?
He made a motion. She's second. All right, any discussion regarding anything? All in favor for accepting the financials? Thank you. Motion's carried. All right, under old business, it says Earl Russell Road. That's, I don't know, it's Earl Russell Court, but the sewer extension, we've already got an okay from you to install the sewer. Engineering was done by Water Management Services, which is one of our usual contractors, and when they laid out the plans for this project, they came up with an estimated bid total, or estimated total cost of $69,500. That's to lay 700 and less than, a little less than 800 feet of sewer line with manholes and necessary connection to an existing line. They went through the process of asking for bids. We had three bids submitted.
They have them.
Luxwell &amp; Sons was $74,500. Who was the second? I can't remember. I remember who got the, Ernie Davis &amp; Sons was 57,000, 57,808. I remember the engineer estimated 69.5. And then Scott &amp; Ritter out of Bowling Green came in with a bid of $50,000. That's almost $20,000 less than what the engineers, we've not had anything like that happen to us in a long time.
Did they do work on the sewers, though, the first contract they were with?
Who, Scott &amp; Ritter? I'm not familiar. They haven't worked on these sewers while I've been here, I know. Anyway, the engineering firm has recommended that we go with Scott &amp; Ritter out of Bowling Green at $50,000 to complete that sewer line, the extension at Earl Russell Court. And so I would recommend that to the council. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Is there a second to that motion? All right, David over here. Any discussion to it now?
Tell me again, where's Earl Russell, so COVID?
Dubai.
Cleveland, Oregon. That's right.
Across from East Hartford Church.
I don't want to put it on 231 by that, where they don't work.
Where you gonna tear it down?
Is there any other discussion regarding location, or cost, or companies, or anything? If there's not, I'll take a vote, all in favor of accepting that bid? Thank you. Motion's carried unanimously. So we'll notify Scott &amp; Ritter, and they can begin as soon as possible. We'll notify the owners, and they can begin their work as well. All right, let's go over to new business. The first thing we have here is the first reading of the ordinance for our financial budget for next year. All right, you should have that. Yeah, you got that first thing in your additions, your addenda, ordinance 2020-01. This is your budget for next year. We need the first reading on it, so can you want to read that for us?
Ordinance 2020-01, an ordinance adopting the city of Hartford's annual budget physically here, 7/1/20 through 6/30/21, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Whereas annual budgets proposed, proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, whereas the city council's reviewed such budget proposal, made necessary modifications, now therefore to be ordained by the city of Hartford.
Okay. That's the first reading, and we'll have the second reading. We have to have it before June 30. That's the deadline for it. I will commend Lisa on this. This thing just doesn't pop out of thin air and look like this. The next few pages is not even close to what she goes through to come up with, with that. I mean, that's where you get the numbers that she has on that first page. First page is what we submit to the newspaper for printing. But the, the work to do those next two pages is quite extensive. It looks just like your, your financial report that you get, all those pages, and just go through item by item. Takes a lot of time to do it, and I commend her for the work in putting that together. All right, next is the Walker Street property. We've mentioned this before. We've had an okay to get an appraisal on that property. The property we're talking about is a rectangular piece, it's 60 by 150. It's at the edge of the parking lot for Brother Davis Church up there across from Ellis Park. Okay, that property, 60 by 150. I was approached a couple weeks ago by a young man who wants to purchase that property. He plans to put some duplexes on it. That's going to be his problem, to figure out how he's going to do that.
Where is this property, man?
It's at the edge of Brother Davis Church's parking lot. You know where his parking lot is, next to his church?
Yeah.
Okay, between...
Right across from the...
Entrance to the Ellis Park.
Softball field.
Yeah.
I know where it is. I know where Ellis Park is, but I can't figure, it's across the road by the church, it's one there.
Right beside it, yeah.
It's up beside the house trailer and the camper trailer. That's where it is. It's 60 feet by 150 feet deep, okay? And...
The city owns that?
The city owns that. Didn't know that, had no use for it, but somehow or another, when they came up for sale, or the city either bought it or took it over due to liens on unpaid taxes. I don't know how, what the, what it was, but somehow or another, we came up with that property. We're the owners of it. And so we had it appraised, and the property appraised for $4,800. And that's, well, I told him, I said, that's what we'd have to ask for it, and he was agreeable to that. So I just need an approval by the council to sell that property, is to Justin Gary, who's, one of Leon Gary's sons, who's approached this about purchasing the property. And so I'm asking you, if you prefer to sell that property, I need a motion. If you don't, then we need to let him know that it's not going to be for sale. Questions?
Yeah. Where that property is, was that factored into the engineer's plans for Ellis Park?
No.
Not even for parking?
Uh-uh.
What you're thinking of is the engineer...
Across the road.
...project that Deanie did, the project that Deanie had planned included that if...
That's what I thought. I thought that the plan for the park had...
But not what he did. It was, that's what Mayor Minton was looking at.
Yeah, the big draw, if they presented.
Yes.
But it's not included in that. It was... It was, if anything, if anything, it would have provided parking space for the ball fields or, you know, that would have been the only use for that property.
It was a planned parking lot.
I thought, I thought it was actually a different track from what y'all just described. I thought it was something on the other side.
No, 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 no. It's across, it's across Walker Street from Ellis Park.
Yeah, I thought it was on the other side of the church next, closer to the factory. That's what I originally thought.
Okay.
It's out there next to that trailer, ain't it?
Yeah.
That would make that a river clean that up.
Do what?
Well, is it costing us anything?
It costs us $300 to get it appraised.
But I mean, we don't have to feed it, we don't have to mow it?
No.
I mowed it.
We have to mow it, yeah.
I mowed it this morning.
Yeah, I think we would be short sighted to sell it until we can get to the point where we really want to make plans for Ellis Park. And $4,800 is not a lot of money. I mean, it's not like we're going to break the city if we don't take his money. I just think that, I mean, if we are going to sell Ellis Park, it would make a good parking lot.
60 feet. I don't know, how wide is this room?
Haven't got a clue.
It's, it's about 50 feet, something like that, probably.
So? How big of a place you're going to be able to put on that?
That would be my bigger concern with planning and zoning.
What's that?
Would be the, what he could fit on it.
Well.
The what he does with it if he also decides to sell it.
I think there might be a plan that Brother Dave might offer some of his property to him too in order to make sure he's got enough property to build duplexes there. You know, to make it wide enough for, to meet all the.
All sets and everything.
All the boundaries spaces and parking and everything else it would take. That's, that's going to be between them. Our question is, do we want to keep the property or do we want to sell it?
How about we keep it?
Well, it'll give us some revenue.
Well.
Continuous revenue, tax revenue, nothing else.
Yeah, we're not getting anything off of it right now.
Well, we're not.
If we own this.
But it's not costing us anything either.
Just a.
About $300 for survey.
Yeah, the mow it, that's it. We're missing out, we're missing out on property taxes and, and rental and water.
130 by 60 lot?
60 by 150.
60 by 150?
Yeah.
That'll be about 100, that'll be weird. That'll really put us in.
The park.
The dark.
Do what now?
Huh?
I didn't hear that last muffling.
I said, that'll be about $120 a year. That'll really keep us in the black.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the property he puts on there, the house values that'll bring tax money in from there. But it's up to y'all whether you want to sell or not.
How about we not do it?
Okay, you don't want to do it, okay.
Yeah, I don't want to do it.
All right.
I think it's, since you managed to go on to your file.
You can make a motion if you want to, to sell it. It's up to y'all. If you agree with her, then I'll sell it, that's fine.
I'd make the motion to sell the property for $4,800.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Now, we've discussed the heck out of this.
He seconded. Yeah, I just, 60 feet is, it's going to be a challenging parking lot because, you know, you've got to have two directions in and out. I just don't, I don't know how they laid it out or how many cars it could hold, but. I was very questioned.
Well, the way trucks are selling, it won't hold about four of them. I wonder if they're moving in there so there won't be a place for a house.
And if it's anything like Walmart parking lot, 150 feet, you're not going to get anybody parking 150 feet away to, to go to the park, you know? They'll park the first 20, 30 feet and they'll quit after that. Okay.
Kenny, did you say to sell for exactly the 4,800?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Okay, there's both in. If you're in favor of the motion to sell the property to Justin for $4,800, so, so by the uplifted hand? All right, if you're opposed by the uplifted hand, thank you.
You're a killer, Jerry.
Pass four to one. One and a half, okay. All right. The next item is for a city website. The EDC has worked, come up with a plan to, that's one of the things we've asked the coordinator to do was to serve as a website coordinator as well. And they've come up with a recommendation after approaching four different outfits to set up a website with varying amounts of involvement. One of them says, we'll put, we'll set it up as a bare bones website. You provide all the information. Others say, we'll do the website. You provide us with the information. We'll input it, manage it that way, and so on. After all that, they have come with a recommendation to enter into a contract with. What's the name of this?
Townsquare Media.
It's what?
Townsquare.
Townsquare. I've got all these others written down. I didn't write that one down. With Townsquare to, after investigating all these others, they recommend us entering into a contract with Townsquare. We don't have any amount yet. We've talked about, it was, I thought it was about $400 a month was what the contract was.
It came down somewhere.
It was $297.
Huh?
$297, I think.
Yeah, $297.
$297?
Yeah.
$297 a month.
A month.
It's originally 600 a month until they came down to the three.
Okay, $297, so we're walking at less than $3,600 a year.
Well, I think that's, you know, that can be renegotiated, too. I don't think that promise $297 to the rest of our lives. Did they tariff?
I, I, what I was trying to find here, but I know that it did have at least several months locked in.
It was a year, wasn't it?
I think so, yeah.
A year at that price.
Which will also give us time to kind of see what works, what doesn't, that sort of thing.
Right. And this is the one that takes the work off of any of you all having to do the input or all that stuff.
We just have to notify them of what we want on there, is all it is, to say, we've got a, a festival coming up that's going to be this, or we've got, it can be announcements such as, you know, city hall will remain closed till June 29th or whatever. Please use the drive-in window. Which is working out well. People are making payments through the drop box. Anyway, I digress. Chase rabbits. All right. So I'm looking for a motion now to enter into the city, the city enters into a contract with Townsquare.
Townsquare.
I'm right.
I'll make a motion.
Before I forget.
To enter into a contract with Townsquare Media for annual commitment.
All right.
As a development and.
Yeah.
Okay, this is an EDC committee recommendation, and is there a second to it?
I'll say it.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion? Uplifted hand? Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. The alcohol regulatory fee, this is something that the legislature provided. I'll let our alcohol control officer.
It's one way to spend money.
No, what it is, is we are allowed to add a tax to the sale of alcoholic beverages in the city that covers our police expenses for beverage control. That can be patrolling through a parking lot. It could be whatever. It does require record keeping on our police department's part because we can't just charge anything we want to. What we have to do is we get, recoup that, which money goes back into the general fund. You know, it covers our police expenses. So it does benefit, it gives us more general fund to use somewhere else. I mean, that's obvious. So the question is, are we going to pursue that? Or do we want to leave it just like it is now and just pay for the police department expenses out of the general fund? And not charge a tax? Is the tax.
Do they charge a tax?
Do what now?
I think they're going to charge the tax.
Okay.
How much is it annually?
It could be up to 4%, I think. Up to four, usually about 4% is what.
Right. It would depend on what our expenses were. If the police could show us where their expenses were, 4%, we could charge.
Like what we're collecting.
It depends upon gross sales.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's not an arbitrary figure. We just pull out of thin air. It's something that we're recouping our expenses, whatever that percentage turns out to be.
The first year is kind of a baseline. She has to take a fraction from the police and fill it in to develop the initial fee. And each year, we look at how much, how much revenue generated the city and adjust that baseline down to make sure it fits within that.
But the, but the only way that, that we can be successful at that is to know how many calls that they were called out on that were related to alcohol, how many DUIs, how many accidents related to alcohol. And then in turn, we can offset costs related to that.
Because of the presence of alcohol as a count.
So like if alcohol sales were, let's just say, $100,000, and we spent $1,000, you know, in expenses for our police department to take care of alcohol-related problems or patrol or whatever it was, then we would charge a 1% tax next year on the alcohol sales to recoup our expenses.
Up to 4%. Is that how that works?
Um, I can't remember.
There's a formula. There's a, there's an actual.
There's a formula. So we would have to look at the sales of alcohol in Hartford for the past year. And then we would look at our Hartford expenses for the past year. And then we would come up with what percent would need to be charged to Capers, you know, Cork and Case in order to cover those expenses. Next year, we would look at the exact same thing. They would just have to report to the city quarterly, just like occupational tax does. Those fees, those regulatory fees would be remitted to the city. And then that revenue that was received would go directly to police expenses. Not anything else in the city. Just like occupational tax doesn't go to everything in the city. The alcohol regulatory fee would only go for police.
But it helps offset those expenses.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So we'd have less money coming out of general fund.
Just trying to gauge how big the pie is, the opportunity is there.
It's only, honestly, it really depends upon, once you get that first base year, that baseline, it's going to be dependent upon your gross sales and then the actual number of calls and what your police do in terms of spots, alcohol-related incidents. But in most cities, I think.
Wasn't that being paid to the sheriff's department?
No.
Beer dam charge, has been charging for a few years. They've been charging a percentage, you know, to their sales, but.
And it's afforded them several opportunities for their police.
But I don't know, I don't know that sheriff's departments, were they getting anything?
No, because county's not wet. So the regulatory fee is only for the city.
Yeah.
But early on, that was told.
Yeah, we built it into our original ordinance.
The county was hitting what the city should be getting.
But the original amount was our.
The county couldn't get it because the county voted dry.
Right.
So now that's.
If they had voted wet, they could have.
Now going to adjust it based upon this formula. So that's why we have to deal with it, do that work.
Okay, question is, do you want to pursue it or do you want to leave it like it is?
Well, like it is, it's actually already in the ordinance. We would just have to.
Right, we'd have to start the process of determining what our tax rate. Do you want to set a, start the process to set a tax rate for alcohol sales to recoup police expenses?
Yeah.
Motion?
Yeah, I'm motioning to do it.
All right, motion, but Tony second?
Second.
Second.
David. Come on in.
Yeah. Any more discussion? Everybody understands it? All in favor? Uplifted hand? Thank you. Motion carried unanimously.
We all need to get with.
All right. What you have also in here is a business plan by.
Concerning the events coordinator at the station.
Okay, the community coordinator business plan. It's right after the sewer extension bids report. This was submitted by Ashley Smith Evans.
I feel a little sorry that our first one comes right in the middle of the pandemic. I think that's kind of.
Yeah.
I'll leave it if she signs up.
Yeah, she'd already jumped in, had plans for egg hunt and Easter egg hunt and things like that. So she had plans. Now, this is what she has submitted as a business plan. We have to take a look at this and see if this is what we agree to. If so, we will adopt this as the business plan for.
I think there's some wording changes that need to be looked at.
Do what now?
Whatever wording changes.
Okay.
I have this problem when I'm given a pen and a piece of paper.
Okay.
I don't know. But, and it needs rewording in a few places just to clarify.
Okay.
Certain things.
Well, tell me what it is, and I'll read it to her.
Okay, like in the first paragraph, the vision. Starts out, it is the vision of the community coordinator that's citizens and leaders of Hartford. Well, it's really, it's really not her vision. It's the City of Hartford who would like to have you know, a coordinator who would support and promote the city as an engaging and valuable community in which to live.
Okay.
Give or take a few words.
All right, City of Hartford's citizens and leaders. Okay, put this, I'll say it again now. I'm trying to brief, just, just adjust what's there. It's a vision of the City of Hartford citizens.
Mark out, mark out.
Community coordinator.
It is the vision of, okay? Mark that out. And start the sentence, the City of Hartford.
Okay.
And the community coordinator will support and promote Hartford and its citizens and leaders as a safe and engaging, valuable community in which to live and collectively contribute to the city's success.
The City of Hartford and a community coordinator will promote.
I, I will comment, though. I think the purpose of that was because she's the coordinator presenting this plan. I think that was her vision in creating the plan. If you look at a normal business plan, that's kind of how it's laid out. I, I know what you're saying, but I think that's why the work does.
Well, yeah.
So she's saying that it's her vision in creating this plan, so that's what she was trying to carry through.
Well, you know, but they're, they're, well, yeah, that's the beginning. You sure you want to sit here and go through this, George?
Yep.
Okay.
Hold on a minute, now let me, let me make sure. Okay, the City of Hartford and.
Community coordinator.
All right. Will promote.
Or does promote, support and, well, or does support and promote Hartford, Kentucky as a city that is safe and engaging. And going to add that in there, but citizens and leaders.
Okay.
I may have to come up here more, I think.
Okay, that's all right.
Okay.
What do they do here now?
The mission is, yeah, it would be, it submits, the mission of the City of Hartford and the community coordinator is to engage in the city's, the city's citizens and leaders through innovation, dah 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 dah.
I, I don't, I, I, just because if you don't mind, I, I don't know that we necessarily. I don't, I, I, just because if you don't mind, I don't know that we necessarily have to adopt it right now. So do you want to just kind of send an email out and even what the EDC says? Because I don't think we've had a chance to.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing, I do have a question. So this is the business plan for the community coordinator of the city of Hartford. This is not the city of Hartford's vision or the city of Hartford's mission, which is something that gets developed when we have the, when we finally bring back the other company. So I wouldn't get them too confused. If her vision's not lined up with the city of Hartford, then it was the wrong pick, you know? And I don't, I don't think that's.
Well, we should be getting the vision as the city of Hartford.
But this is her vision, not the city's vision. I think that's the point.
That's the way, yeah. What Tara said, yeah.
The only thing that was a question to me, it was the clarity on, and I guess we decided the selection was made by the city of Hartford council. But then down here on the bottom, it talked about this, the EDC deciding which one, you know?
Why are you?
On the website. So he wants the selection is made. Let's see, two media companies.
Yeah.
And provide the economic development committee with each proposal.
I think it's because the EDC made the recommendation to the council.
Yeah, I think it's just, and then the EDC makes the recommendation appear to the council for selection. When I read through it, I was confused at who was going to make the decision.
Yeah.
But we just did, so it doesn't.
She should just add in there.
It doesn't matter.
With each company's proposal to submit a recommendation to the council.
I just didn't understand the flow, like who was going to make the final decision?
Yeah, to submit. EDC can't do anything without a council approval. But that's the one she's been working with most closely is the, is the economic development committee and. I'm just glad to see some cooperation among people, the different groups in Hartford, you know, the community coordinator and the EDC and the council.
So what are some of the things that the EDC is kind of recommending as events? I see that we've got the Christmas event, kind of a reopening of the city.
Well, like George mentioned, we originally were talking about doing something around Easter and having maybe like another like summer event, but then this happened. And kind of viraled everything. So she hasn't really came to the EDC about like a Christmas event or anything yet because we haven't had an opportunity to meet since the coronavirus issue happened. But I think she's probably just kind of trying to switch gears.
Yes.
Like after.
Well, we, I think we asked her to do at least two programs a year, two events a year. I think she's, you know, trying to make an effort to small, large, whatever it is, try to get as many as she can in, you know, try to see what works. The only one thing I thought about is the chili cook-off.
You gonna cook?
Huh?
You gonna cook?
No, I don't. And I don't want to be the taster either.
You have to take into consideration all this COVID stuff that's going on and can you actually have group feedings and, you know?
I think, I think as the months go on, we're going to get a lot more guidance on.
All right. What should, what do you want to do with this?
Well, the EDC meets, needs to meet. I don't mind working on something, sending it to you, where I see a problem.
So you want to postpone it until next month's?
I think though, as a whole, I'm comfortable with, maybe the wording's not right, but it directionally seems.
Yes, the direction, the direction's good, yes.
So to, like the message to Ashley, I mean, I think it's, it's good. I think it's on point. It just needs a little tweaks and.
Yeah.
Maybe she just needs a little guidance in cleaning up the language and.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll just postpone that till, put that on the old business for next meeting then.
But she can start working on the website, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
And if we get that website underway, we'd be.
Yeah.
Be making strides. We've been talking for, what, two years?
I know George and I and Ashley had a teleconference with the Town Square Media. I guess it was honestly a week before the shutdown happened, wasn't it? Right before it. And so EDC actually met via Zoom after that to discuss.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can, so we can hopefully get a recommendation to the council.
Any questions at all or any suggestions, any other recommendations?
Events.
Yeah. Okay. That includes what we have listed. Informational, I would remind you, June the 2nd is the deadline for filing for council seat for election this fall. Of course, we don't have a primary for, just a general, but June the 2nd's the deadline. So just want to remind you of that. Would you like to speak to the council, one of you, about the EDC's plans regarding the grants to the business and?
I think, I don't know, I shouldn't be a bottom player.
Yeah. What we're talking about, I'll get them started, okay? What we're talking about is because of this coronavirus and we've had businesses that have been shut down, no income at all, the EDC said we had some money set aside for an event. We had some money set aside for grants that we didn't make. Nobody applied for. So why don't we pool those two amounts and have a grant process for businesses that have been closed and have suffered financial harm during this time can fill out the application and receive a grant from the, through the EDC. It'd be from the city, but it'd be through the EDC to assist them with payroll or utilities, rent, whatever, supplies, whatever it might be that they need. The process is just fill out an application. There are some records that are required to just kind of weed out those who just say, well, I'm going to get some free money or something like that. But to make sure people are legitimately needy in this area, okay? Yeah.
You know, that's essentially what, what George said. The money has already been allocated to the EDC for these type of community programs and grants. But since we couldn't do the others and given the current pandemic, we wanted to do something to, to give back to these businesses that are already existing in Hartford and to help them in any way we can to reopen because obviously Hartford needs these businesses to reopen if they can. So we've put together some criteria and some guidelines so that hopefully what we'd like to do is launch this as soon as possible, an application that businesses in Hartford can submit these applications. And then we can review that information and make recommendations to the mayor as to how to allocate some of the grants. Essentially, it's just restructuring the existing grants we have into something that fits the current common. We want to, everything that we've ever heard as the EDC and that's something that the members have always come back to is, yes, we want new business in Hartford, but we also want to celebrate the businesses that we have. And this is another way we can do that, make sure that they reopen.
And this, so some of this is contingent on reopening?
Yes.
That would be one of the criteria's, okay?
But the ones that have been shut down, like, I don't know, barber shops have been shut down, restaurants have been shut down.
Beauty shop.
Beauty shops have been shut down.
But if they're going to reopen, I mean, that's kind of an advantage to like.
Pretty much. I think that's why the grocery expansion is happening, right?
I think that's the only piece that's really clear to me.
I think, well, thanks, is nonprofits or tax exemptions are not allowed to apply.
Sorry.
But I will say that during this few months that we've been besieged with this shutdown and our water bill payments have, I mean, certainly there are people without jobs that can't pay, but we've had people making partial payments. They've been very scrupulous about their responsibilities and we've not lost as much money. I think normally we were, I think we're about eight thousand dollars a month in, you know, cutoff amounts. I think right now we're maybe a little less than seventeen thousand dollars cutoff. So we've been very fortunate with people making payments, actually paying over beyond, you know? Instead of taking change, they're just applying it to next month's bill, you know? So they've been very understanding about our situation. We just want to try to help businesses that get back on their feet. I think it's just, you know, Olesborough has tried, has done this. We've kind of modeled this after them. Of course, we can't do it at the scope of how they've been able to help. We don't have that kind of money. But just anything I think would be a boon to our businesses, would be a help to them. How much? We've talked about five hundred and a thousand dollars, different types of grants or.
I think that might be tied to a little bit about what hardship they have in the nature of their business, I think, under the application.
I've even suggested just however many applications we could get, you know, five hundred, thousand dollars, you know, just depend upon how much, even taking some extra money out of the EDC's account, you know, to try to just help as many as we can. So anyway, that's what they're working on. I just want you to be aware of it. Anybody have anything else that you want to discuss?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we going to have a spring cleanup day pickup, whatever that is?
Uh, we've been kind of avoiding it because of the virus, people putting stuff out.
Yeah.
You know, we have done some chipping. We've, we've, we have picked up loads that people have paid for.
Yeah.
But as far as having an overall cleanup, we've kind of avoided it just for the safety factor of, of the virus. I mean, they can still wear masks, but.
Yeah. Well, I understand. They were just asking if we were going to have one.
Right now, right now, it's looking like a fall. It's probably going to be the first time that we'll have a cleanup. I mean, I've got a lot of stuff I could put out right now myself.
Well, I think everybody does because you couldn't do much of anything else.
And a lot of cleaning.
So George, if they, if they put stuff out though, and we say, hey, this is the deadline to get it out, and that, you know, you wait three, four days to pick it up, doesn't the risk go down a lot in terms of the interaction?
You're talking about it being contagious of what's being put out.
Oh.
Yeah, because I, I think there's just a missed opportunity right now because like a lot of people are at home, they don't have anything to do. They may just clean up their yard and put stuff out and kind of help out.
Right.
If we wait till the fall, people go back to work, we may not get as much participation.
We try to do it like two days one week and two days the next week is what we normally try to do. And like I said, we'll pick up, you know, if somebody wants to pay for it. I mean, and we've had people say, I've got this trash outside my house. Jason tells him twenty-five dollars and we haul off, you know, a bunch, but. I just, a lot of times I leave it up to Jason to decide when, what we should do. I'm open to suggestions, you know, if somebody thinks we ought to have it, I don't have a problem saying, you know?
Well, I think a lot of people have stuff that they're waiting to see. I've had three or four different people ask me that.
I mean, we're always going to have those accumulated things that we want to get rid of and twice a year is pretty, pretty convenient, you know, for people to clean out their house. We try to do it six months apart. You know, if you want to, I mean.
If it's safer to wait later on, you know, as it gets a little hotter or whatnot, if it makes a little sense like that or.
Well, we.
Till the website's up, maybe, you know, you can promote it on that. I still think it's something we could do or should we try to do?
I mean, I don't have a problem with it at all if that's what you want to do, you know, like in late June or something like that, just say a couple of weeks there, Monday, Tuesday, one week, Monday, Tuesday, next week. We have to do it Mondays and Tuesdays because it's garbage pickups on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, take away our workforce, so.
I think it's something we should do. I mean, I, we go out and walk a lot. I've noticed a lot of limbs that are close to the road on sidewalks and.
Yeah.
I think it would be nice to go ahead and have a pickup.
Nice to find?
Go ahead and have a pickup.
Okay.
Even though it's not spring.
Right.
Matter of fact, I wasn't sure you didn't have one before the virus broke out, but I didn't. I missed it.
No, we tried, we tried to put it on water bills, but don't, nobody reads their water bill, you know?
Now, Louis could, if you can, or get Jerry on the radio and tell him to.
Yeah.
I mean, he seems to have a broader range than anyone.
That doesn't mean we want everybody in Mulever County to bring their junk over here.
We get it. I mean, there's people from out the country bringing their garbage in on garbage days and they know right when the garbage pickup is and they, like a couple, bunch of raiders, they just run in and drop the garbage and run out. Anyway, yeah, I'll, I'll approach Jason about it and we'll.
The only other questions I had is the two projects with the, the water tank and the meter install, what's kind of the status on those?
The, the water tank, I talked with that engineer probably about three weeks ago, two or three weeks ago. He's, he's putting it into a form to take before the, the vision of water for their approval. It's got to get that approval before we can apply for any type of money. The other project, it's ready to be advertised. I mean, it's already engineered. We're just waiting for, water management people are operating in their homes and it's hard for an engineer to be away from his office and put things together, I guess. I don't know. I'm not an engineer. But it is ready. It's already engineered. All we have to do is advertise it and I would look for it to come in under budget too as well. I was really shocked when this sewer line project came in under budget. It's such a simple, simple project, you know? Mostly they've been, they've been waiting for drier weather, you know, to do the digging. I'm not sure that they haven't looked at this again after consulting with some of the contractors about the situation down there, how close it is to this, the fence, I mean, the fence around the wastewater department, wastewater plant, the fence around their property is going to have to be taken up. You remember, we talked about what that's going to cost to put back and everything. That was kind of astronomical. There've just been some issues. I'll check with Steve and see where we are on that, see if we're not ready to. Trying to think what I've got in there. I've already got, I've got the plans for it. I think all we've got to do is just advertise it, I believe. We'll, we'll contact all the contractors around who might be interested in doing it.
I know we talked about maintenance, maybe going to the fence, taking that up. Our maintenance.
Yeah.
We talked about that too.
Okay. I hope we come up with some way of saving some money. Because that's a project that's cheap enough that we're probably like, we're not going to borrow any money to do that. We'll just pay for that out of our occupational tax. It's a, it's been, you know, it's always had the intention of, what am I trying to think about? What's the purpose for the occupational tax?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure. That's another word. Okay. So I mean, it was going to be a project that we could just pay for. So I mean, it was going to be a project that we could just pay for out of our own funds or. What's the other project?
Okay, so we're back up here, R O S support. We have our motion, where is this money coming from?
Yeah.
We didn't designate that back in that motion earlier.
Oh, okay. Is anybody, are we in consensus that the money to pay for the sewer line at the R O S court comes out of the occupational tax as infrastructure cost? Are we in consensus that?
Yeah.
Okay, I see nodding heads. Do we need a motion to, in a motion?
Go back and amend the original.
Jerry Scott can amend his motion and.
Yeah. You can amend your motion just to add that the funds come out of
Yes.
Occupational tax.
Yes.
And second was who?
David.
David, are you agreeable with that amendment? Okay, everybody in favor of the amendment? Thank you. Motion to amend is passed. I forget about about the funding issue. Anybody else have anything else to bring up?
I want I want, no, does Jerry Wright, has he been given a solar head award? Don't think so. I'd like to nominate him for a solar head award for what he has done on the radio for this community.
Okay. That'd be fine. I think I can just do that on my own.
We'll see.
I'll just notify, anybody have any problem with it? Anybody doesn't, to the point you don't like him, but I'm sorry, Jerry.
What's the capacity tax?
Can pass that up. If I have a problem with me, just contact him and offer him the solar head award if he'll accept it at our next meeting. Okay, I'll do that then.
Tell him we expect repayment then.
Expect him to say something good about us for a second.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm, okay, I'm in a kind of a mood, I'm sorry, I'm just, it's been a long day.
It's the antibiotics.
You're right on target.
Okay. Good suggestion. Appreciate it. We're just looking for those people who civic minded, want to see Hartford move forward. Anything else?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor? Motion carried, thank you. Appreciate you being here, thank you for.